Good afternoon, Bellflower. This special meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, October 2nd, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Vol call please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Santenaz.
Here. Next item, uh, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to government code section 54954.3A, the public may address the city council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on listed items should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the city council.
Anyone who'd like to speak about this item, uh, please come up to the podium, write your name, and state your name for the record. Come on, it's free. There's no charge. Nope. All right, moving on. Um, item 4A, Mr. Stewart.
This is one consideration item. It's consideration possible action to appoint a successor to Councilmember Raymond Y. Hamada's council district number one seat with the term ending December 2024. Uh, by way of brief history on this is that Mr. Hamada resigned from the council effective August 14th. On August 28th, the council decided to set up an appointment process whereby they selected the mayor, Mayor Protem, to serve as a subcommittee to make recommendations back to the full city council with regard to the appointment. On 9/15, September 15th, the subcommittee of Mr. Santenaz and Mr. Koops interviewed seven candidates at that time, and each spent basically the whole day doing it, so good work on that. But, uh, they are right making recommendations of their finalists tonight, and I'll leave it to you, Mr. Mayor, to explain the process from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank all these seven applicants, uh, who submitted their application and went through the process of the interview that was, as mentioned, by the city, by the city manager on, uh, September 15th. Uh, Councilmember Koops and I interviewed them. Um, we appreciated their responses to us. It was a great day. It was a whole day, uh, interview, but something that, um, uh, I really appreciated. Uh, as far as I recall, this is my third time that I'm in the process of, part of the process of selecting a replacement city council member. It's something that I don't really enjoy. It's very difficult. Um, Councilmember Mayor Protem Koops and Councilmember Dutton and I have been through this process, uh, and also Councilmember Sanchez, although he was on the other side, back in 2016. Uh, in 2016, then again, 2018, and then this time around. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, um, our city manager, Mr. Stewart, and our city clerk for helping us navigate through this process, and also our city attorney for giving us legal advice going through this process. Uh, I want to thank also our city council colleagues for giving us, giving me and Mayor Protem Koops the, uh, the honor and the responsibility of interviewing candidates and forwarding the top candidates before them today. Uh, I want to thank Mayor Protem Koops for joining me in this, uh, in this endeavor. So, we had a very difficult decision. Um, Mayor Protem Koops and I, after the interview process, we sat down and kind of agreed that, um, we will forward the top candidates before the city council today. Uh, the top candidates back then were three female and one male. Uh, in the process of staff doing their due diligence, it came about that one of the candidates, um, had a conflict of interest that, um, he has a relative that is, who is working for the city of Bellflower, so that basically would disqualify him. Another applicant or candidate also has a spouse who is a commissioner of the city of Bellflower, and in the, during the interview process or during follow-up process, uh, the applicant or candidate stated that, um, if she is appointed to the seat, uh, the spouse will resign from the commission seat. So therefore, we are forwarding the three applications to the rest of the council this afternoon, and, um, their names are Wendy Morris, Ruth Zemkowitz, and Stacey Conan. Uh, during this process, um, we will ask the, um, the applicants to come up the podium and, um, give a statement, and will then give them the opportunity to, um, especially to, uh, Councilmember Dutton and Councilmember Sanchez to ask questions, uh, because Mayor Protem Koops and I have already asked them lots of questions. So, but if there's any opportunity for us to do some kind of follow-up questions or clarifying questions, uh, we will, we will jump in. So in terms of the process today, after the questions and answers, um, there will be some nominations. And just a reminder, there's, uh, a second is not required for nominations. And thanks, uh, thanks to our city attorney. In 2016, um, when we went through the same process, we formed two subcommittees, and it was a tie. So it's very difficult to break the tie back then because what happened was, um, myself and, um, former council member, um, Ryan Snablick were in one subcommittee, and Mayor Protem Koops and Councilmember Dutton is a separate subcommittee. So we interviewed the candidates back then separately, and at the dais, we recommended two individuals separately. And, uh, fortunately, back then, there was a fifth member who was still part of the council, uh, Councilmember Scott Larson. So he came back in the, in the discussion and basically made, made the choice between the two top candidates. We don't want to go through that. So thanks to the initiative and foresight of our city attorney, he came up with a resolution, 16, uh, 1618, which would basically, uh, govern the process of nominating and also electing a, a, uh, a city council replacement should there be a tie. So the process, if should there be, in the unlikely event that there's a tie, because there's four of us, so it can happen. If there's a tie, there's a way to break the tie. One is, one of the council members could change his vote right away. Okay? Or there could be a motion for reconsideration. A council member can make a motion, duly seconded, and we go to the re-vote again. So I'm glad, thank you, city attorney, for going through that, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Again, this was, this was, uh, put back, way back in 2016. Who would have thought that we'll be, we may need this in 202023. So with that, uh, Mayor Protem Koops, you can add something to what I stated?
No, you're pretty complete. And again, I want to say what was said before. We appreciate the quality of all the applicants. And I'll be honest with you, any one of the applicants, any one of the seven could serve as a city council person. They were all that well-qualified. So it was just a matter of finding out which one would be the best fit in, not only currently, but in the future. But, uh, we were very pleased on the number that, uh, decided to put their name in and go through the process, uh, because we didn't know what to expect. Um, we're working on a time consideration here. Uh, we need to get this done by the middle of October, because, uh, when Mr. Hamada resigned, that started a clock. And so the procedure will be, we'll make a choice tonight, and the person we choose will be sworn in at the next city council meeting, which will be a week from today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So with that, um, any question of us or the process? We're good?
Maybe for the candidate's sake, if you don't mind, Mayor. Um, I have asked for all the applications and, uh, 700s and, and got those and reviewed that, so I have some kind of a inclination of, of the candidates or the applicants, I mean. And, uh, so I'm kind of up to speed, because Councilmember Sanchez and myself were kind of in the dark while the committee did their work or whatever. I just wanted to share that with the applicants.
Mr. Mayor, I'll add-
Go ahead, um, Councilmember Sanchez.
I'll add to that as well. I also was able to request the, uh, documents, reviewed them as well. Uh, so to be fair, I have reviewed them.
Okay, good. And by the way, just for the record, um, the applications and the Form 700 are public records. They're available upon request from the city clerk. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go through the process. I will ask the applicants, one at a time, to make a brief statement and be available for questions, and I will call in the order when they file their application. Okay, uh, we'll call on Ms., Mrs. Wendy Morris. Oh, no, you don't.
Okay.
The only time you don't have.
Hi. All right, uh, what do you guys want me to say who I am?
If you can just give us a, some, like, a brief statement for the benefit of the public and also the two, uh, council members who are here.
Thank you, guys, first of all, for having me. I'm really honored and appreciate it. Uh, my name is Wendy Morris. I do live in District One. Um, I'm very nervous right now, so I'm really sorry. I have, um, I don't know, just what do you guys want to ask me?
Take a deep breath. You're okay.
Yes. Okay, go ahead. What do you guys have for me?
Why don't you tell us a little about, I, I have questions that I'll probably ask all the candidates. Tell us a little, it's hard to be first.
It is.
But, uh, tell us about, uh, your, your family, uh, how long you've been in this, you know, just kind of like a little bit of your bio, that a little more, I would say, what do you do?
Yeah, so I, um, I live, breathe, and work Bellflower. I, I live in District One. Um, I have a lot of my neighbors here right now, family, friends, neighbors, uh, to show my support. Uh, I work in Bellflower. Uh, my husband and I own businesses in Bellflower. Uh, all of our, my daughter goes to school in Bellflower. Um, I do have two children. I have a 16-year-old and a 14-year-old. Um, and yeah, everything we do is Bellflower. Uh, so I serve on a few, uh, I, I go to church in Bellflower also. I'm a, I've been a strong leader in our church for many, many years, at least 20. And I, um, I also do a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff in Bellflower, different committees, different, um, nonprofits, stuff like that. So pretty much everything I do focuses in Bellflower on some level.
What kind of volunteer work that you do, or, or, you know?
I've worked with the homeless.
I know something the audience knows, so.
Yes, so I have worked with the homeless for many, many years. Um, I used to do the homeless breakfast and, at Calvary, um, every Saturday. I think I was involved in that for probably about 10 years before COVID. Uh, I work with Little House. I've been a board member of Little House, which, for anyone that doesn't know, is a women's drug and alcohol shelter here in Bellflower. I've been on their board, say, about 16 years. Um, I do a lot of work with women in recovery, and, um, um, I serve at the leader, I've been a leader at the church for about 15 years at their Celebrate Recovery Ministry, and, um, which also is, kind of goes hand in hand with the, uh, recovery programs and trying to help people better themselves and just, you know, become better productive, more, you know, you just have to help people up a little bit. And sometimes when you hold them up long enough, they'll, they'll get it and do it on their own. And so that's really where my heart is, and that's what I do.
I, I can lead off with a question, and I guess that was a little bit about yourself, so.
Yeah.
Now, I have some questions written down, and, uh, all the applicants, you may get the repeat of a question and may not, I, there's an odd number of questions that I have here. So the city has come a long way in the, the last 10 years, um, with the economic business plans and policies that we've put in place under this council's direction. So what could you do to help support the continued economic development? And the reason I'm asking this question is because that's, ever since I've been elected, that's been one of my pet peeves, is trying to turn this city around, because we pretty much had rolled up sidewalks and closed doors downtown when I got elected.
Well, first, I love where the city has went so far in the last 10 years. I love the development going on down on Bellflower Boulevard. Um, the growth is amazing. Um, you, uh, the live-work situations, I, I like that idea. Uh, so seeing that areas that you could live and work, in the sense like behind Franks where the condos are, um, I, I like that. So when I, I would like to see it everywhere in Bellflower. I'd like to see the growth, and all that comes in time, and I, I feel that I could be helpful to that. I feel that, because I do live, work, and breathe Bellflower, I feel that I would, I would have something to bring to the table in the sense of trying to help develop more of Bellflower. I would like to know, I do like to work off facts and statistics, so I would like to know how, what things have worked and what haven't, because there have been businesses that have came and went. So I would like to see what, what worked better. What, I, just to give an example, do, do restaurants work better? Does, is some other types of businesses something that, um, seems to, to grow easily? But again, that would be more looking at stats and stuff like that, facts.
Well, we blew it a couple of times. Uh, guys? Ain't that right? Yeah. And so it's not, it's not a perfect world.
Right.
Other than that, um, what's your take on, you want me to, you want to go with a question, or, go ahead?
Either way. You've done this before. You have more experience. I figured if I-
You want to lead, okay.
That I haven't.
Yeah, I might draw a question.
Yeah, I got a few, yeah.
What's, what's your take on the city going into the cannabis business?
I'll be honest, at first, I, when I just, you know, as a citizen, hearing about it, I was like, oh, that's gonna be really dumb. You know, like, we're gonna get all kinds of, um, we're gonna get all kinds of just riffraff, there's gonna be robberies, you know, I thought all the worst. But I've never walked into any of one of those businesses. I don't patronize them, so I can't say how they are or whatever, but since they've all been opened and I've never heard something bad about them, I've never heard about robberies, and I don't know that they don't happen, but they're not the consensus of what's going on. So at this point, I don't really have anything bad to say. Again, if I had some facts in front of me or statistics that said differently, I would probably be thinking differently, but with not having anything, I've never heard of anything bad so far.
That's kind of what I was asked the question, and what, on the outside-looking end kind of a thing?
Yeah.
That was your-
That was mine at first, yes. I can't say I stand here today to say the same, I, because I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything crazy. You know, there's riffraff everywhere. There's stuff that's gonna happen, of course, but like I said, with, with facts and stats in front of me, I, and if they were bad, I would be thinking another way. But I haven't heard anything yet, so.
This, uh, position that we're gonna appoint somebody here, we also look at if a person is electable, because we don't want to go through all this and, and, you know, we've anointed somebody with the lack of better terms and get them in here. You need to have, I guess, the wherewithal or finances. It's not an easy task running for election. It's bad enough running for election for an open seat, then you're appointed, and a year later, you're running for election. What's your take on that? If you, I, I know you probably know a little bit about, you know, the toughness of that, and, uh-
So when I knew the seat had opened, I'd spoke with my husband about placing my name in, among the applicants, or applying. And, um, after I spoke with my husband, I spoke with my boss, because I do work for a company also. Um, part of my boss and I talking, um, her name's Jean, upon, so when I talk about her, I'll say Jean. So upon Jean and I talking, um, she supported me in this. And she, um, so I will have the, the time that's needed to do stuff that I will need for the city, but going into an election period, yes, I do have the means. Um, I will be able to see funds to help me with a campaign. I would plan on running, definitely. And I'm already preparing myself. If I get the seat, that I will have walkers and help people to help support me throughout the campaign trail. And I don't know exactly what that looks like. I would be looking for some guidance there, because it is totally uncharted territory for me, but I would, I will definitely, I will get my funds. I will put my time into it to, to be elected and hopefully would get elected. So I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you, uh, Ms. Morris. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, and Councilmember Dutton. Um, I'll start off with an easy one here to kind of warm you up a little bit.
Thank you.
Why are you interested in serving on the council and completing this term?
Um, you know, I, I love Bellflower. I live here. I don't plan on leaving. I'm not sitting at home right now saying, oh, I just want to get out of this place. I'm here. You know, this is where I'm raising my family. My children will live here in years to come in their own homes, and I know that. So I, um, as, I'm a friend of Ray Hamada's, and unfortunately, as he got sick and I was seeing, I believe in what Ray believes in. I mean, I may not believe in every single thing Ray believes in, but I, I supported Ray in his, um, campaign, and I'm a friend of Ray's. And so as this was coming up, I thought, you know what, maybe, maybe I should put my name in the hat. And honestly, I didn't know how it worked at first, so I wasn't even for sure if putting my name in could be something I could do, and if Ray wanted to come back. I didn't know how it worked. Let me just say it that way. But obviously, that's not how it works. But, um, yeah, I just want to kind of grow, grow with what Ray was already doing. So I would like to, um, come alongside what Ray had started, not, not go against.
Very good. And then to follow up on that, what specific issues or initiatives in our community do you feel passionate about and would like to address if appointed?
So I feel like, for me, I feel like we've gotten a really good take on the, a lot of the homeless issues, but I do feel that there's always could be more work to be done. Mental health and homelessness and drug addiction are a huge combination with each other, and I recognize that, and I would, I'd like to, where I feel that we have, we are, we are going in the right direction. There are places in this town that you wouldn't want to go to a few years ago at night, but I don't see that anymore. The, the homelessness have come off the streets more at night, and I'm sure that's because of the shelter. I'm gonna assume it's because of the shelter. But, um, I would like to, I'd like, I, like I said, I, it's part of where I kind of have a passion for already, and, and I, that mental health and home, that mental health and drug addiction is just, uh, a big ball of goo somewhere, and it just, I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is, but that's somewhere that I would want to, that and, I'd like to see development all over the town. I'd like to see it in District One. I would like to see it in all the districts. Now that it's not happening, I'd like to be a part of it continuing. That's about it.
Thank you, Wendy. Um, I think the last one, because I, I, Councilmember, uh, Dutton asked a couple ones that were interesting to me, is, uh, in the event of a challenging decision where public opinion is divided, how would you balance the interest of your constituents and the overall well-being of the community?
Well, I'm a stats and facts person. I have, if I see what's in front of me, if this is what works, then it's what works. Not everybody's gonna agree. We're all gonna agree to disagree. There's times when things aren't always gonna go the way everybody wants them. I learned that a lot in church. It happens a lot in church. So, but, um, you know, I, I feel upon, I will look at the stats, I will look at the facts, and if they speak for themselves, all public opinion, I will go with, I can't always do the right, what, what this side wants over what this side wants. Somewhere you have to have a balance. So, um, stats and facts will, will be what, what I'm looking at, at that time.
Very good. And then lastly, just, um, as the newest member on this dais, I think one of the things that I'm reminded of consistently is, uh, in a good way, by the way, I'll say, um, my colleagues to my right, you know, they had to endure tough times, right? Budget cuts, deficits, um, you know, literally cutting jobs, right? That's one of the, probably the worst feelings that one of, any of us could ever experience. Um, I've done it on the, you know, from the employment side, so it's not easy. How would you approach the budgeting process and ensure fiscal responsibility during your time in office now and if appointed, and then if you were to run and be elected in the future?
Again, um, stats talk for themselves. Facts speak. Uh, if there's stuff that has to be cut, as much as if it's a hard thing to cut, I guess you, I would assume with the full council, we would talk about it and figure it out, but I, I have to look at the facts and the stats. I mean, and if the, that's what it's, it's, they speak for themselves. I truly believe that. And I, I would have, if those just tough decisions have to be voted on, then that's what has to happen.
Well, I think I, I failed to finish that statement, because
Okay.
that's what they've endured. I've come on and, I mean, our budget is-
It's not happened.
Their budget is amazing.
Okay.
You know, they've done a tremendous job to turn the tide and turn this ship around, is what I like to say. Um, and we have the best, you know, finances we've ever had, so we're flush when it comes to that. And, and then now it's about spending wisely, our funding, using it appropriately where needed, right? Public safety. What would be your priorities when it comes to spending some of those resources and some of that hard work that city staff have, have endured to get us to where we are in a financial position that is so, so good?
Public safety would definitely be a, a number one for me, um, and economic growth. I, I love to see the growth that we're having in our city right now. I, I just, um, I feel we're headed in a good direction. Again, it, we could do, it could be everywhere. It doesn't have to be in downtown. It's, it's on the other end of town. We just seen a hotel go up. Um, I, I, I love that. So I, I mean, this is all kind of new to me, so I don't know that seeing stuff in front of me might change, but right now, just standing here, I feel that's where I would go. Public safety is definitely a must, though.
And I think lastly, for me at this point, Mr. Mayor, um, for Ms. Wendy, Ms. Morris, um, as you know, districting is new to Bellflower, right? Um, it was in effect in 2017. We've had a strong council who, who has been on the same page, meaning that we don't necessarily represent only our districts. We're looking at the better interests of the entire city.
Yes.
How do you feel about that? Do you feel that you, your responsibility or your accountability is only to District One?
No. I would feel every, be as a whole. Um, of course, District One is what I represent or would represent, but, um, no, I, our city is our city. We, we need to be together. It's, um, it's all of us. It's everybody here, you know? All, all the people sitting here. I would, not everybody lives in my district, you know, but we, we all come together for a better good. And that's, that's what I would like to see, at least.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Uh, Councilmember Dutton, you have any, any more questions?
I would, I would just say that that I believe Wendy when she says public safety. Her husband is one that has to step down if she's appointed, and he's been my public safety commissioner ever since I've been up here.
Yes.
And he does a very well job. Yeah.
Thank you. My husband will be willing to step down, though. He is. We talked about that before this also.
Okay. Any other question? How about Councilmember Koops?
No, I think with the interview that we had with you before and a few more things brought, brought forward today.
Okay.
That's pretty complete. Now, I've got a point of order. Are we gonna do, as we always do, once a candidate or applicant has spoken, we can't bring them back?
Uh, I think we can bring them back if there's any follow-up question. I mean, this is-
Because sometimes a question will develop beyond that.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
All right, so you may, you're done for now, but may come back.
Thank you, guys. Thank you again for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
So you will take a recess. You will.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'd like to invite now Mrs. Ruth Zemkowitz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you can just make a brief statement to us and then be available for questions.
Thank you for having me. I am born and raised in Bellflower, lived here my whole life, with the exception of two years away at college. Um, married my husband. We moved into District One, which we didn't know was District One 34 years ago, so we've lived there a long time. Um, I grew up knowing a lot about city politics because my dad was the city administrator in Bellflower for a period of time as I was younger, growing into my teenage years. And then when I was, um, 18, my mom decided to run for city council. My dad had moved on to another city. So actually, go back a little, when I was young, um, my first exposure, I think, was I worked on a city council campaign as a very young person. I helped Mary Lewis when she was running. So that was my first kind of exposure to looking at what a city council position looks like. Then I helped when my mom ran, um, and then my mom actually ran a second time, and my dad ran one. So I've actually been a part of three different campaigns in my own family. Um, so I've had that exposure. Uh, growing up, I thought, oh, I want to, I want to major in college in pol, in political science. I thought I wanted to go into local government. Um, as I, as I did that, and I started realizing we were, wanted to have a family, I changed my major to business, and I thought, oh, the city politics will always be there. I'll come back to it sometime. Um, well, then life went on, married my husband. He became a deputy for 30 years. That was kind of like, okay, I'm not gonna do that while he's a deputy. There's a bit of a conflict. He often patrolled in the city. We live in the city. It was a lot. So, um, a lot of times, he was actually the first SAO for the city of Bellflower. And this is kind of bragging on him, but he has two Bravo awards. So he worked hard here. Um, so, uh, kept going. We've raised two children. They're both, um, grown. We have grandchildren. Um, I currently work for our church in the city of Paramount. I've worked there for over thirty years. I'm the business manager there. Um, we also have three other nonprofits that are associated with the church. And I serve on all those boards. So a lot of exposure to nonprofit. I hold a business degree from Cal State Long Beach. Um, very involved in all the finances. That's kinda my forte. Um, and I enjoy it. Um, so that's kind of me in a nutshell, I guess, right now.
Alright, thank you. Uh, who's gonna go first? Councilmember Sanchez?
Because that way, see you, I took a couple of questions of, from you. It's what you alluded to, if you go first and then we'll, we'll just alternate.
We'll take turns. Okay.
Good teamwork here. Alright, I'll, I'll start off similar. Um, first of all, uh, good afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for going through that process, uh, the process. And Wendy, I meant to say that to you too. I apologize. Um, I'll start off with uh, well, you talked about the history, so that answers that one. Can you um, what specific issues or initiatives in our community do you feel passionate about and would like to address if appointed?
So I come from a background with my husband serving in public safety, law enforcement. But that's always kinda my first thing is how are we doing with our law enforcement? Um, how are we doing with public safety? How does that affect our community? Of course, it does play and spoke more about the homeless situation than I actually personally know. I know what the city's done as far as the shelter. But I do realize that kinda those things go together. And I think they really affect how we look at our city and how others look at our city. Is it safe? Does it feel comfortable to be around? So always what I would hope for our city is that we can do a better job building our relationship with the Sheriff's Department, as long as that's what's the appropriate way to go. Um, and having it, having a more effective relationship with them, I think would be a priority for me.
Uh, thank you. Um, are you currently familiar with the council's priorities and ongoing projects? And how do you see yourself contributing to these?
So I have watched what's happened in our city for a long time. Um, and I've been, uh, I guess the right word would be impressed with the change that's happened, especially to our downtown. So when I watch what the vision is, I can't say that I know exactly the um, goals, but I do see the vision happening cause it plays out in front of us. And it's exciting to see the change in our city. Um, when I was young, Bellflower Boulevard was an active place. There was lots of good businesses. And to watch that change to where we had no good businesses on the boulevard to where we are now, um, it's very impressive and it's, it's something I think our city council and our city should be really proud of. So I would love to be a part of something that continues to have a vision that grows our city, that continues to develop. Not just the boulevard, but the areas of our city.
Can you, if you don't mind, provide a visual of what the perfect downtown would look like for you?
Visual. Um, well, I think we're working towards it. It's, it's nice to be able to think that you can go and um, have somebody come to visit and go, hey, let's go to downtown Bellflower. We can eat there. We can walk around. It's safe. You know, there's the fire museum there. I could take my kids. So I love the, the um, process that we're in. If I could compare it to somewhere, um, I can't, I can't think of anyone that actually has the downtown boulevard like we do right now. If I think about Paramount or Cerritos or Lakewood, we actually have a community downtown, which is, I think, different. Um, you know, maybe the city of Orange has something like that. They have an area. But um, I, I think that we might be something that other places might be looking at the way we're developing it.
Um, I take it that you like or have a, a, a good feel for or a desire for more of the um, nine, like for example, the mixed-use units that we're seeing?
The mixed-use units, the, yes, yes. I think um, when it first started happening, I was like, well, that's interesting. I didn't think we would do that. Um, and then to see how successful it's been to hear, you know, these things are selling or being filled. Um, I think it's a really great use of our, of our space. Um, and it provides opportunities. I've always said Bellflower is the perfect place to live. So it provides lots of residential opportunities that are, you know, not the normal apartments down the street or something, which I think is a good thing for our community.
Very good. Um, I'll ask, I think this will be my last question, just cause I think your opening statement answered a few for me. And I know, um, I'll leave some questions for Councilmember Dutton. In the event of a challenging decision where public opinion is divided, how would you balance the interest of your constituents? And the overall well-being of the community?
So um, I'm laughing because my mom went through something when this, through something similar to this when she was on the council a long time ago. And um, I, I recognize that it's very challenging because um, you want to represent, in this case, our district, but the whole city. You wanna bring what's, what's right for what people want. And then you also have to, have to do what's right um, financially for the city, when something may not look, oh, why are we gonna do that? Well, actually, it may have a benefit to our city where other people see it as just a negative. Um, so I think you have to have a balance. And you have to listen to the input that you receive from your citizens. And then you have to make a hard decision that says, okay, is what they want right? Or is it more important to follow what's financially beneficial to the city of Bellflower that we think does provide long-term benefits? So there's a balance.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, that, that concludes my questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi.
And thanks for uh, your time. Again, with uh, the economic development that you've already attested to and uh, been here, um, bringing um, housing downtown, I know we, we talked about mixed-use or whatever, but the ninety-one apartments that are, is downtown, um, it's ninety-one uh, high-end, high-rent stuff apartments is what they are. And I don't expect you to know exactly what it is. We've lived and breathed that for since, for five years since it, it was a concept. And now they're leasing. So on the outside looking in again, your take on bringing more residential, walking stuff downtown, what is your vision on that type of stuff?
So you're referring to the project that's just starting to lease? Or are you referring to going forward?
Yeah, the lease. Yeah, just that one. Because you can see what we did before is with the condominiums that are in every little space down there, the, the mixed-use where the, the restaurants are down below. This is a whole different animal here. It's high-density and it's six stories.
So we live in a city that we, we do have a lot of high-density places, right? Just different. They don't look like that. They're not downtown. They're on smaller streets, on Woodruff, you know, corner. We have a lot of it. So it, it is an interesting thing that we're going to consciously put that in our downtown. I'm hoping that it will be beneficial, that it'll create more business, more excitement, more, more energy coming downtown to the restaurants, to the other businesses that are there. I hope that was the anticipation that would happen. And that it, because it is a higher income level, not um, you, you're gonna have a different type of clientele, right? For residents. So I would think that that's what we're hoping is happening there.
And society is changing. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm just wanted your take on the outside because in the sixties, there was a lot of bad decisions made. And as far as, you know, rentals and apartments is, and we, we can attest to that. You've been here, you know, a long time.
A lot about it.
But it, you know, that's part of, you know, the downtown, I guess is what I'm, the question would be is I wanted your take on it. And do you see that kind of stuff coming in the future?
So my original take on it was like, oh, we're building all those apartments right there. That was kinda my reaction, right?
Yeah, I, I got that from when you were trying to explain it.
It's just, it's interesting, right?
It is, yeah.
And I, I think it's gonna be successful. It looks like it's gonna be successful. So I think part of what makes it successful is its location. Cause it's right downtown. So, you know, people will enjoy that. So then it would come to, okay, where would the next location be? What, what advantage would it have to build a, that many apartments again, somewhere else? That, is there a reason why it will work again? I guess you have to have that information.
Yeah, we don't know. Yeah, you don't have the information and whatever.
Right.
Have you been to the Fire and G Museum?
I have not gone through it completely. Um, yet.
Okay, that's fine. And uh, you see the parking structure there. That's, there's, these are all pieces of the puzzle of, of our vision up here. And all we can do is, is, is when you're, you know, we're up here, is try to make the best decisions. And I said it earlier, we blew it. We blew it a few times. And uh, we all got mud on our face over that and tried not to bring it up, huh?
Let's keep it positive.
Keep it positive.
But uh, this is, this is a job that you can't, you can't uh,
You can't hide it.
You're not gonna be perfect at it. Um, so I guess what you're, you know, you're, you like the direction of where the economic development's been going. And we try very hard to try to bring developers in here to um, uh, coddle them and, and do what we can to bring. There was a time when, when Bellflower, we would talk to people, Bellflower, well, that's that city. And people know Bellflower now, in that, in that realm or whatever. And, and it's, it's, we need to keep this direction going. And like I said, and then when I started, economic development is one of my pet peeves. And whoever is appointed here tonight, we need to make sure that we, you know, have the vision and, and bring more vision to us because we can't think of everything. Um, with that, um, I know you've got a very law enforcement background, so I gotta ask, um, cannabis, what is your take on cannabis? The city being in the cannabis business?
Probably gonna answer similar to Wendy. Oh, really? That's what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
And then um, I also understand that there's a financial, financial benefit to the city to bring it in. And you have to weigh both, right? We're gonna receive sales, we're gonna receive tax out of it, right? There's a benefit. So then how can we do it in a way that is creative, that the business will be um, safe for our city? Uh, and, and obviously, there's some benefit for people that need it for med, medicine, medicine purposes, right? And I'm not gonna say the word right if I say the other one. Um, so you know, okay, so here's our advantages, here's our disadvantages. You have to weigh it. I, I so far, again, like Wendy said, I have not seen it become a negative, to my knowledge. There probably is some stuff that's happened that I don't know about. But um, I guess if I was sitting on the council and that was what we were working on, I would have had to say, okay, do, do these benefits outweigh the perception of, oh wow, that's gonna be here. And it's everywhere, right? So it's not like we're unique in this.
Why I ask it is to be honest with it. Every year, we have to renew cannabis permits. And if we have a bad actor, that's our chance to, you know, not have them anymore or whatever. So that's, that's the reason. And, and it is a lot of money. And, you know, I'm not even gonna tell you that the, the council stayed up for twelve hours. We had an all-nighter with a meeting, twelve-hour meeting, you know? It's like, my God, to just try to get that in and we pulled it off. Not expecting you, you know, to remember how an election goes, but obviously, my other question was is, is if you're appointed, you have to be, you know, we're expecting you to run, you know, why would you be up here a year and, and, and not run?
Right.
And uh, with your mom, you know, which ran for an election, your mother ran for election, you must know something what you did. I know how old you were when that happened.
I was eighteen the first time she ran.
Oh, okay, so you're knocking on, you're helping.
I walked the city with her. I know who the campaign manager was, the treasurer. I know, I know a broad concept of what has to happen. Um, but I was, yeah, I was intricately a part of both, uh, both, both of her elections or campaigns and my dad's. So not that I would all be the same now, all these years later, but I do have a, a perception of what has to happen. Um, and I, I, I think it would be like, and maybe that's why it's taken me a lot, this long to like be, okay, here I am. Because I know it's a lot of work. And um, you know, you've gotta have the support of the people who, now it's not the support of your city, it's just in your district. So back in the day, my mom literally walked a good portion of the city. Well, now there's an advantage. You only have to walk one district. So that would be a little easier than what my mom encountered. But yeah, I, I have a, a, a broad concept of what has to happen.
Alright. Thank you. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Alright. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez?
Can I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely.
I'd like to follow up on, on Councilmember Dutton's um, question about cannabis. One of the things that we did, um, actually, I was on the planning commission when, it was my first meeting, when I received my packet this big and it was about cannabis. And it was about zoning it and where it would go if it, if it were approved by the voters. Um, if we were faced with the question of expanding licenses and quality operators, cause that's one thing that we do have, can I, can I, where would you stand on that?
So your question is, would I be open to expanding the number of them?
Correct.
Okay. Um, well, I think knowing the fact that it has a financial benefit to the city, I'm very open to looking at it. And I think that my biggest concern would be the location. And it's, you know, agreeing that we are making a wise decision by putting that there, wherever that happens to be.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protime Coops?
No, I appreciate all your candor and uh, your history. And uh, no, I think uh, I know where you stand. Appreciate you coming in for this interview.
Thank you, Dan.
Alright, thank you so much, Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Be available for, for the questions later on. Uh, I'm now, I'm gonna call on Mrs. Stacy Canon. Hi Stacy.
Hello. Good afternoon, council and everyone in the chambers. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, as a mayor said, my name is Stacy Canon. And I'll tell you a little bit about me. I'll divide into two parts, residentially. I've been in the city thirty-one years and tomorrow is my thirty, thirty-one anniversary, a thirty-one years of anniversary. So, thank you. So I've been here ever since we got married. And that's a funny story in itself, but I don't have time for that. But um, I hadn't heard of Bellflower, didn't know anything about Bellflower. My family came to California in the nineteen fifties and we lived in Northern California. And after I graduated college, I have a ma, a bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University. And I have a master's degree in organizational leadership from Biola University. So long story short, is I ended up in Southern California and I love it. And I've been in Bellflower, um, like I said, thirty-one years. Um, professionally, I work for the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts. I am the procurement and risk manager. And I am responsible for over two-hundred to three-hundred million dollars of expenditures each year. Um, I have a staff of about twenty-four people that I lead in the areas of procure-to-pay cycle. I deal with public contracts. I deal with public contract code. I deal with civil codes, labor code, government codes, et cetera. Um, my responsibility is making sure that I have a fair and transparent process in the procurement process. So we deal with a lot of public works and we buy a lot of different chemicals, et cetera, and a whole bunch of other commodities. So that's a little bit about me. Um, again, my story of how I ended up in Bellflower, didn't know anything about Bellflower. This is my husband's idea and this has now become my home. I've been here over half of my life. And I have chosen to live here. And it was something that you said, Mayor Sonny. And I remember you said a while ago that you chose to live here. I could have left here, but this has become my home. This is my home. My roots are back east, but my home is here. And this is my community. When I look around, as Mayor Dutton, no, excuse me, as Councilmember Dutton has mentioned about the different changes that um, we have experienced in the city. And I am proud of what you guys have accomplished. And my goal today is I want to become a partner in the progress that our city has made thus far. Questions?
Okay. Councilmember Dutton?
Want me to go? Okay.
Yep, we're gonna take turns.
Since you just wrapped it up with more of a, you know, economic development thing. And I've been preaching that since to all the applicants. Um, so obvious, everybody likes the direction of the city and, and the three applicants have been here long enough to know what it used to be like.
Sure.
The and I'm gonna piggyback just because of, you know, Mr. Sanchez said it, you know, we're, we have more money than we ever had to work with. And we have the ability to entice, um, no, that's a bad word.
Encourage.
Encourage.
Encourage, thank you. Encourage development. Yeah, that's one thing I haven't used to end up being up here. I can just let it slip and get myself in trouble. But anyway, encourage developers. We have the money now. And before, we had like really pinching pennies before to try to get something. And we're trying to sell something and you have nothing to back it. We have something to back it now. Whether it's banking property for future development, like you've seen some cities do, and they leave it vacant forever and then they finally have a big project. But with that said, that's the kind of mu, money and, and budgeting that we have to do for the development of this town to think of in the future. We're, we're learning as we go. As once we get one, we got,
Sure.
You know, we gotta go to the future. And so what I'm asking is you're comfortable with betting on the future with taxpayers' money?
Yes, I am. Uh, one of the things um, in my introduction, I wanted to share as well. I've worked for the city. I worked for Bellflower Unified School District for um, ten years. I've worked for the city, I worked for Bellflower Unified School District for 10 years. So being a part of the business office at the Bellflower Unified School District, we often had to make tough decisions when it comes to education. I'm quite sure you guys are well aware of that. So yes, I would be comfortable in dealing as far as making those type of decisions. Again, I was in the procurement, so we made decisions like that often. So that would be right in my willhouse. Again, I've been in public sector, probably working in public sector for over 20 years. So I'm familiar with the different types of challenges that public agencies have to deal with when it comes to finance, as far as restrictive funding, as far as general funding, et cetera. And I know sometimes the public looks at the bottom line, especially they'll say, well, we have all this money, but yet they're not maybe familiar with the type of restrictions that come with some of that funding. And that's something I would be comfortable with explaining to constituents as well.
Got it. And my other question, another question would be, as you, as the other candidates, we've asked about, we're expecting, you know, an applicant that gets the seat is to run for election
Sure.
when it's time. Very time-consuming and whatever, and a lot of money. It costs a lot of money, whether you, you get donations or put money out of your own pocket. You know, just give the audience an example, I spent like $33,000 a year ago in one. But that's, that's something, you know, and you may not have to spend that kind of money. You know, it's how much you work, work do you do on the campaign? You can, you can, you know, knock, you know, you can print stuff yourself or whatever. There's ways to, to save it, but in my position is, is you only have so much time. And you can't, when your time's somewhere else, you, you have to make up with, with cash, so to speak. I guess that's what I'm trying to explain. Do you, with, with that said, do you have, you know, the ability and time, funds, all this stuff it takes, a following, it takes a following too. You have to have people to believe in you to go out and, you know, knock on doors and do that.
Yes, I do. Like you said, I counted the cost before I threw my hat in the ring. And that was one of the questions that I was asked with, well, Dan Coop, Councilmember Coop, and Mayor Santin Ash. And of course, that's the cost that I wanted to anticipate. I knew that was gonna be a question, because as you mentioned, why would you do this just for a year only, not to want to throw your hat in the ring? We actually started our ministry in the city, so we do understand what it means to actually go out and get donors. We do understand what it means to be rooted. We do understand what it means to count the cost. So definitely, that is something I would be open to, or I wouldn't even throw my hat in the ring in the first place.
Gotcha. And then my other question is the cannabis question.
Yes.
And what is your take on the outside looking into the city now that we're in the cannabis business? And knowing your kind of background?
It's interesting you ask, because I used to be on the Two Tub Committee, and I do know that this was one of the avenues that was used to replace the resources that we had, the revenue from the Two Tub Committee. I'm gonna be completely honest, I was not for it, and I still have reservations about it. There are some of the things that I see that are the fallout of the cannabis. One thing is, I was sharing is I don't like the marijuana smoking in the parks. And it seems like, I don't know if the cannabis being in the city has made people more comfortable to be a little bit more open about smoking cannabis openly. And it does take away the privilege of being able sometime to go to the parks, because then you smell it all around. So one of the things I would love to see before we even consider expanding something is possibly even having maybe cannabis, cannabis zones where people can smoke freely or whatever in those zones, and not infringe on the rights of other people. So from the outside looking in, economically, it seems like it's been a win-win. But I remember sitting here in the galley when this was up for discussion and public comment, and it was a gentleman sitting next to me, and I said, well, just because something is legal doesn't necessarily make it right. But financially, yes, it has benefited the city, but I would like to see some other things also taken into account before we consider expanding it again. And I would just echo the same sentiment that the other candidates mentioned, is that public safety is also something that concerns me as well, if we do consider expanding cannabis, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Stacy. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. I'll start off with a, with one of my questions, which was, what specific issues or initiatives in our community do you feel passionate about and would like to address if appointed?
Ooh, I really feel passionate about a relationship, a alliance and partnership with the Bellflower Unified School District. I have roots and connections there, because again, I worked there for 10 years. And I know at one time, the city and the school district didn't have a cordial relationship, but now the city and the school district's relationship has improved. So I would like to see different programs expanded to encourage our youth, maybe different, working with our B R M through our parts and recreation, working with our school district where we can have more options for our youth. So those are things I feel very passionate about. And also economic development, like I said, I miss being on the Two Tub Committee. I really love to see the development that we have done in our city. And I think Bellflower is unique because we can attract different businesses. And I do like the avenue in which the city did decide to take. And I remember coming to a meeting where someone said, yeah, we can attract a Target or a Walmart. Those are different things maybe that we miss. So we have to go after things that are different and unique. So those are things that are passionate to me. I remember being up in Canada one time, and they had this grocery store called No Name. I said, that would be probably really cool in Bellflower. So different things like that. So, and it was just really this cool grocery store, and it just had, all the labels were No Name, literally. I said, that could be a hook in Bellflower. So those are different things that I look for when I think about economic development in the city as well.
Thank you. Could you provide, in your words, a vision for the downtown? If, if you could design it?
One of the things I can see, and as some of the candidates already talked about, the mixed-use development was really innovative. So when I look down the city, one of the things I see, I also, I see more open space. Maybe not so much residential, but I would like to see more things where we can shop in our own city. I know one of the big things that has been on our list is a grocery store. But as a fashionista, I like to shop, so I wouldn't mind seeing a couple of stores in here where we can actually go and buy some of our own products. So when I think about Bellflower Boulevard, and I'm thinking about on the other side of the 91 freeway, where we're starting to develop, I think about Flattable, and I can think about different types of stores maybe we can attract, where people can actually shop in our own community.
Very good, thank you. In the event of a challenging decision where the public opinion is divided, how would you balance the interest of your constituents and the overall well-being of the community?
Being open. Sometimes I think it's just a matter of people just don't know. And sometimes we get a little bit of information, and then we just come up with all these different decisions or conclusions. So one of the things I would like to do is I would like to have maybe a portal on the website where I could share things more openly with the constituents in my district, so they can at least have a little bit more information. A lot of people don't come out to the city council meetings, and sometimes they just want you to tell them, so tell me what happened. So that's one of the things I would balance, and just make sure I'm more open with the people in our district.
Very good. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dunn, any follow-up questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem Koops?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that of all the applicants that we interviewed, you're the only one that responded by sending a thank you for having the interview. And that showed your heart, and it showed your class. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
But you were the only one that said, thanks for the interview, and how you felt about it. And I wanted to recognize that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Mayor Protem Koops. I just want to talk about a couple of things. You mentioned about Two Tub, which wants to let everybody knows what Two Tub means. Two Tub is the temporary, usually users' tax oversight board. It was formed when we, when we passed a ballot measure when we were in a financial bind. And it was for five years, and we promised our residents it will sunset over five years, and we kept our word. After five years, it was gone, so that's why the Two Tub is not existing anymore. And one more thing, just, I don't mean to scare anyone, this is factual. A candidate spent $100,000
Oh, goodness.
in an election. So I'm just letting you know, it's factual, so not $30,000, it's more than that.
How was the results?
So I don't mean to scare anyone. Okay, these are facts, okay, these are facts.
He only won by 49 votes.
The fact is, money can't buy an election. And it was 110.
Anyway, thank you so much, Stacy.
You're welcome.
My colleagues have a question to you, is, is there any question that was asked of one applicant that was not asked of the other? Because I want to make sure that the
I think we've been fair.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm thinking about that.
Because I want to make sure that all the questions were asked of the same, of all the candidates or applicants.
If I may, if I may ask Ms. Morris to, I have a question for Ms. Morris I did not ask.
Okay, go ahead. Wendy?
Wendy, the question I asked to Ms. Ruth was the openness, if, if, let's say, an applicant comes and approaches and wanting to expand our cannabis licenses, what's your, what's your thought on, take on that?
Again, I'd like to see the facts and the statistics of what is currently going on with the cannabis before I would, before or against. I don't really, I only know public, what my, what I hear from just being a citizen, you know what I mean? I don't really, is it beneficial? Is it beneficial to the city? I couldn't say I'd be for or against. I, I don't know. But I would definitely, if it's, if it's a good thing, that thing's a good thing, you know?
All right, thank you, thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other question?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Was Wendy asked about the, the vision of downtown?
Oh, that's right. No, thank you. Wow, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
Of course, of course.
I could use
So you, you were trying to cheat Mrs. Morris?
Oh, I would never, I would never, I would never try to cheat anyone. The question was, if you could provide a visual, or like from your words, what would the downtown look like if you could?
I like where downtown is going right now. I actually, the live-work situation, I, I have a little bit of background with, through my regular job, with this, oops, this into town. But, and the vision for that isn't exactly how it went at first. It was the, you would live on top, own, and the bottom would be your business. That's not how that panned out for that, but it's gone very well. So I, I like what I've seen. I, I, I love the way the Bellflower is developing down here. I'd love to see it in more places, in Bellflower, you know, so I, I like kind of where we're, where we're headed, the way the train's rolling.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, any other question? All right, thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so again, I want to thank all the applicants, and especially the three, the three finalists, so to speak, for coming up this afternoon and answering those questions. I know that it's been, I can just appreciate Wendy's initial emotions when she was, when she was called in the first time. And I know it's very difficult to speak before us, because the lights are here and you can see us. And, but I just want to piggyback on Mayor Protem Koops' comments earlier, that it was a very difficult decision for us, we can pick any one of you. And honestly, I can picture any one of you sitting in that, in a chair. And I firmly believe that. So we're now at this, at this juncture that we have to make a decision. Hopefully, we can come up with a decision today, because we are under the gun, we need to make a decision, otherwise we will have to call a special election. If you don't, if you cannot come up with a consensus today, our time is very limited. And as you know, a special election will cost the city a lot of money, about $51,000. And that's something that we don't want to spend on a special election. So with that, I will now open for nominations to, to complete the, the remaining term of, oh, no, no, no. The term of Councilmember, Mayor Protem Hamada until the next election. So just a reminder to all the applicants, you will have to run, if you want to continue, you will have to run in the November election of 2024. I hope that the amount I said did not scare you. But again, it's just a statement of facts, okay?
I'd like
All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Wendy Morris.
Mrs. Morris has been nominated. Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate
Councilmember Sanchez?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mrs. Stacy Canon.
Okay, Mrs. Stacy Canon was nominated. Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Ruth Simkowitz.
Mrs. Simkowitz was nominated. And I don't have anyone to nominate.
Well, that's over.
Yours was disqualified.
All right.
So the mayor's gonna decide the end of this.
Well, let's do the roll call, please.
Well, let's see what happens, okay?
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, when I call your name, please state for whom you are voting. Councilmember Sanchez?
Stacy Canon.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Ruth Simkowitz.
Councilmember Dutton?
Wendy Morris.
Mayor Santinas.
Wendy Morris. Okay, Mrs. Morris, you will be, you'll be, you'll take it out of office at the next meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday. And is there anything else?
Do you want to make a motion to do this by acclamation, so it's recorded 4-0 on this? It's pro forma.
Okay, it's a motion to elect, to appoint Wendy Morris by acclamation.
Go move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Dunn to appoint Mrs. Wendy Morris by acclamation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. Okay, this is, again, thank you so much for all who participated in this, in this process. Thank you for coming to this meeting. I hope you'll come more often. We'd like to see more faces at the, in the chambers in future meetings. And with that, the meeting is now adjourned.